Okay, so I'll take notes while we're waiting for Sarah. So we're calling the meeting to order at 7:18. And we need to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
All right, thank you Scott.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you Ed. All right, moving right, are not all in favor?
Aye.
Yay, okay, all right. Same deal for, next is on the January minutes. Does anyone have any comments or corrections or issues with the minutes?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes.
Thanks Scott.
One second.
Thank you Noe, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody's in favor, all right. Great. Uh, let's see, next up, planning calendar, I actually forgot to post that, I apologize. But two things, a couple of things just to make note of coming up. So it's February, we have the annual meeting coming up in April. So it will be time to start planning that. And I think we usually have a small committee who is in charge of that, so I want to talk about that today. And then also in terms of nominating for the slate of trustees for that, so those are coming up. We also have the Easter party.
I'm sorry, do we have a date for the annual meeting? So.
I don't think we do, actually. Let's see. So. Oops, sorry, hold on one second.
Was everybody able to get into the folder after I sent the link?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good.
Hi Sarah.
Hi, sorry.
Welcome back Sarah.
Thank you. What, did John ever make it? Somebody I think was trying to get in.
That was me.
Oh, okay.
And Ed's here.
And Ed's here, okay, good.
So I think we're just missing John. Rebecca was going to be late because of another meetings.
Sarah, a strange thing happened to me. Somehow we got your mail even though we lived about eight miles from you. I don't know if you ever got it back, my wife stuck it back in the mailbox. Nothing important, something were there from you though, before you.
Who? For Sarah?
Sarah, yeah, for Sarah.
Really?
Yeah, I had no idea how it got here. It's just that we live nowhere near you or anything.
That's very odd.
Yeah, it was.
So last year on the annual meeting, we did that on April 18th and it was an evening meeting, virtual. So this year. We have our regular, let's see, our regular board meeting would be on the 21st of the month. Does anybody have any dates that we should rule out as we look at April availability?
I'm going to miss our April regular board meeting and I won't be here on the 24th.
We, uh, that was on a, we tried to do this on the weekend, correct? It was a Sunday last year, so. So that would, if we were to try to just kind of mirror what we did last year, it would be like the 17th.
That's Easter, so I don't know if you want to do that.
Okay, probably not. 24th?
Yeah, that sounds good.
That works.
Oh, that was.
Not good for Melanie.
Yeah, she said she won't be here.
True. Okay.
What about the 10th?
It's okay by me. Anybody have any conflicts or reasons that we should avoid it? Okay.
Mary, what day was that?
The 10th.
Sunday, the 10th.
Uh, I'm really kind of unavailable in April, apparently. What time is our meeting?
Last year we did it in the evening, we did six o'clock. But I don't think, you know, I think we can, we also are going to be discussing if it's still be in person or so, we might want to do it a little differently.
If it's at six o'clock, I can show up a half hour late.
Would be better to do something like a seven o'clock on that night, Sunday, seven o'clock.
That will work better for me, but we don't need to plan the meeting around me.
Well, you're, you're one of the people with us to give a report, so.
Better.
All right, let's try April 10th at seven. Start planning around that. Okay. Um, do, 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 so what we're, so. So April's kind of our next big month of things coming up, so in terms of actual events. So Rebecca can talk to the Easter party when she joins us. April is also National Library Week, so I assume there might be some activity around that. And like I say, we've got the annual meeting and electing the board officers and committee assignments and getting all of that together. So, um. That's what I've got on the planning calendar. Does anybody have anything else to keep in mind or any other questions or thoughts? Okay. But let's go ahead and move on to the director's report.
So in my report, I have upcoming programs, but obviously that's going to depend on what we decide to do in terms of opening up again. So if we decide to do in-person programming, I'm planning on doing a, some, you know, Dr. Seuss's birthday is on the 2nd of March, so we'll do a storytime, you know, do some, a different couple of storytimes, maybe a family movie night. Book club is happening. I know the Mahjong fans, folks really want to get back to Mahjong. We'll do a Lego club. And then I've got a couple of things that we need to find dates for, which are, there's a a group that will do a program on Wills and healthcare proxies. And then also Diana Clark is still very interested in doing a program for us about women in the military. So we're going to try and get her going with that as well. I obviously wanted to wait until we figured out whether or not, where we are with COVID and everything before I start actually like, you know, planning. In January and February, we actually had a really lovely virtual storytime for Chinese New Year. Thank you for Kalani and Kai coming to join us on that one. We didn't, we had, we had a couple of families show up, two families show up. One adult who actually was somebody I was hoping might be on the board and might want to do some work with the youth commission, but she's in school and works full-time, so is not going to be able to, to do that with us. However, she did say she would be happy to help with other things, like, but just not be on the commission. We did have seven families though come in and get the storytime kits. So everyone went home with three books and some materials for crafts and activity books and, and all of that was based around Chinese New Year, so they had a fun time. We had a wonderful lecture by Greg Sider about the Battle of Midway. And we had 21 adults come to that. We even had people from Albany because the, I wasn't sure if the Times Union was actually going to run with anything I sent them, but they did. We were able to get a few extra people and the same thing with the Berkshire Eagle. So that was great. We ended up having about 30 something people sign up. And I don't know why we didn't get more people showing up. But we did get seven responses back from the survey that we sent out. And it seems like everybody was very happy with it. All the reactions were extremely positive, so that was a great thing. So I'm gonna, I'll be asking him again. He's got lots of lectures that he said he can do. We had virtual book club. On January, there were six, six people. February, there were four. And we, I just did a quick take-home craft for Valentine's Day, you know, got your supply, get, bring some supplies home to make your own Valentines. And we had five families come in and pick up for that. It was more than I expected, so that was good. You can see the circulation status, all the different statistics, things are pretty. They were down a little bit in January, but nothing significant, so you know, January is usually a slower month just because of the hot, the weather and post-holidays and all that. Um, the one good thing to notice on the back where I have registered patrons with active cards, we did get my mailing actually did some good. We got about 20 new patrons who actually renewed all of their, their library cards and have come back. There was a couple of people who were like, I haven't been to the library in years. I can't believe I'm even in the system still, so. It was a lot of work, but it worked out, so. And we had, out of the 724 letters that I actually sent out, only 241 were actually returned. So that's good too, but it's really good to update all of our files and be able to, you know, now keep track of this a little bit more. And I can probably run this list like every six months or so. And that will obviously be a lot less to deal with. Um, so.
Thank you so much for doing that, Kim. That's really great, especially to see some people coming back and knowing that that's why, why they did, so hopefully they'll, they'll stick around.
I hope so. So we had two snow days in January and February. And the staff, we were able to have a staff meeting on the 28th. We were all trained on how to do Facebook for business, which was just lovely. And now it actually, everybody has been trained and is able to, sorry, Rebecca. To do the Facebook posts, so everyone's been posting once a day and sometimes twice, which has been great. And I think everyone's kind of having fun trying to figure out what's the post next. So that's worked out really well. And that's going to be just a requirement of, of working. Hold on one second, someone's.
Sarah.
It's Sarah. You want to just? No, not at all. You're vaccinated, you're vaccinated.
Let me get a chair.
Um, so, let's see.
They're really doing a great job too, just on the Facebook stuff, and it's nice to see the different personalities too, types of ideas, so it's, it's fun to have the variety, you know?
Yeah, it's been good. It's been really fun to see too. Elaine's post about reconnecting with her old colleague was just great. It's like, this is so much fun. So, um, let's see. So it is going to be a requirement that part of your shift every day is going to be posting on social media. That's just going to be one thing that is part of the, the job description from now on, so that works out well. I attended a training on Overdrive and Libby, which is our e-content apps, I guess you could say. Their, Libby, or sorry, Overdrive is slowly changing over to Libby. And so I've got the training on that, I'm going to train the staff on how to help our patrons be able to move from the one platform to the other. You can still use Overdrive on your laptop or on your desktop computer, but in your phone, they're going to be hoping that people will switch to Libby. And eventually it won't be available on, for download anymore, or Overdrive won't be allowed for, or available for download for Libby. So it's just another snag that I think is going to be, you know, we might have to deal with. But I think it'll be fine because Libby is actually a really good platform to use instead of Overdrive. I think it's better. Let's see, our board meeting archives are almost completely up to date. We are missing a good chunk of minutes and agendas and reports from like 2010 to 2014, somewhere in there. So I'm going to be in touch with some of the past board members, Sue Cass, who was president, and see if she can give us the electronic copies. Because I have, all I have are random papers. So, and I know we need those for our archives, but everything else has been scanned and it's put up. Everything's in some nice new binders, so if anyone wants to take a look at all that old stuff, you can either come here or I'm going to say or share the updated Google Doc. I have a Google folder that will be able to, everyone will just have access to that we're going to put on the website, so that you can just go through and, and take a look at stuff. Let's see. Did our mailing. Noe and I have worked a few times on the website. We're going to get together again next week and work on it as, again. And if I seem a little frazzled today, it's because I've been working on the annual report for the past three days and it's a little mind-numbing and tear my hair out kind of a thing. So it's almost done and it will be done tomorrow, which is when it's due to Upper Hudson, so I can say that that at least is fun. And I've also signed the contract for our accountant to do our taxes for 2021. Brian and me, I don't know how to pronounce the other name, Romo Golia, I think it is. And I also finally heard from Paul Mays about getting together and we're going to start planning on, you know, getting the ball rolling. So I just heard back from him today, which is why it's not my report. And I think that's pretty much it. It hasn't been a terribly eventful month. Any questions?
Thanks, Kim. That was very informative and it's good to have some good news. Glad to see that also some of the virtual programs were, were, you know, well-attended as well.
Yeah, they were.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions or any comments?
Um, you're meeting with Paul. We don't know if the data, just. Yeah, yeah, he's got the, he gave me a list of things and we're going to figure out which one works best.
Okay. So moving on to COVID-19 plan. Kim, you have some thoughts?
Or true.
Um, yeah, I do. I think that, um. Basically, I think that since we're following, we've kind of let the schools give us our lead on how we should, you know, where we want to make, where we want to do things. The schools have now are open up for, you know, after-school activities, after-school sports. So I don't see a problem with us opening back up for in-person programming, in-person meetings, doing all of that. But I would say that the same with the school, until the schools have lifted their mask mandates. I think that it makes sense for us to keep our mask mandate, especially for the little guys who are coming in who can't be vaccinated yet. That's where I feel, you know, let's give that a try. I'm, obviously, you know, that's just my opinion. So I don't know what everybody else is thinking about it in terms of masks at least.
I think that sounds reasonable. I think, I think it is time to move back to the in-person programming and with the other sort of caveats that we talked about before in terms of limiting the numbers, so that we can still have some, some distancing and things like that and not have overcrowded room for a program. And I think right now, like you say, I think since what we have been doing is following the school lead, continuing to do so makes sense and it's something that seems like it can be explained to the public well. I know when I stopped in today, I had asked Jody if people had any issues with the mask stuff with the New York State mandate going away, and she said nobody had had any issues yet. And the one person who just had a question like, oh, are you doing it? When she sort of explained our, that sort of following the school lead, that kind of thing, they were fine with it, no problem. So it does seem like it's in kind of an easier, you know, explanation people can understand.
Kim, does the staff have any view on this?
Um, I only know that Jody was happy to keep masking for a while longer. You know, as soon as, when I talked to her at least about the possibility that we wouldn't do masks after the school says no more masks, then she was kind of like, well, yeah, that makes sense. But the day that we had the mask mandate lifted, she did come to me and she's like, we're still doing masks, correct? So I think that, I know, you know, she's got, her mom and her brother are both vulnerable, so. I think it makes, it makes sense to stay with the masks for a little bit longer, but again, that's, you know, I don't know how much longer, because the schools connect to the library so much, I think that people expect that, or understand, say, hey, we're going to follow the school's rule on this, but I could be wrong too. The people who are coming in are not the ones who are like, you know, upset about having a mask mandate, so.
Well, I think everybody knows my view on the subject. So I don't know that I need to say much, but I think it's time to end the mask mandate. The state government doesn't require it. There doesn't seem to be any particular benefit to wearing masks. There are, I mean, just, there are so many good reasons to give it up. And I guess, I think one is simply that you may be blocking people from coming in who don't want to wear masks. And they just feel uncomfortable and they shouldn't feel second-class. They should be much more inclusive and like, anybody who wants to come in, come in. That's now the government's rule. We're not covered by the school regulations. We're covered by the, the general regulation. I put everything what I thought into writing, so I don't know what to read it. I'm glad to hear from what Scott told us that our next meeting has to be a regular in-person meeting. Well, the law expires two days before.
Well, we'll see, we'll see what they do.
Hopefully they have the good sense to let it expire. Anyhow.
I mean, the, mind you, the. Yeah, never mind. We'll see what they do.
Either way, we can still act to make it a person.
I mean, quite frankly, my view on with respect to the board meetings, there's a lot of information which suggests that people are, I mean, obviously you can do a hybrid. Hybrids present more difficult management of the technology and making sure everyone can hear. So hybrid meetings, at least our experience, hasn't been the greatest with them in terms of hearing. Probably the ideal mode is to continue doing, I mean, once COVID is done, I think we should continue doing hybrid only because it permits greater access. People found that opening up virtual meetings or the open meetings law, having virtual meetings has greater public participation. I don't think it makes a difference to us because quite frankly, we don't have very much public participation. But just as a policy, continuing with hybrid is quite frankly, I think a, a good thing for institutions to go with. In terms of what we're doing in connection with our masking policy, I think it makes more sense to follow the lead of the schools. The CDC will be coming out with probably revised guidance within the next couple of weeks. Just in terms of what the governments have been doing, I think this issue has gotten so politicized. It's probably moved away a little from what the health officials would recommend in connection with keeping the vulnerable population safe. But I think probably it makes more sense for us to stay in lockstep with the schools and then see what the CDC has to say. Saying that, I mean, there are good reasons for getting rid of it too. I mean, it's sort of, it's not one way or the other. It sort of depends on your view of risk, your view of safety, your view of individual freedom, view of choice. And people can legitimately come down all over the place on these issues.
As one deals with the NIAH, which is the testing division of CDC on a frequent basis, I have never heard anything from the people that I deal with in recent times, talking about the last year, in recent times. That points, one, to any particular benefit to wearing a mask. And two, to the idea that people have been able to make each other sick by passing close by, but just sort of walking by each other. I mean, one of the realities of being in a space is whatever disease you have, you will eventually exhale so many times that whatever germs you have will permeate the space. And it has nothing to do with whether you wear a mask or not. Over time, the space becomes contaminated with whatever germs you have. Missed this fact, so therefore I, I don't see that there's any particular benefit to the masks. They're not perfect. An N95 comes fairly close, for the most part, the rest of them. Or even, you know, that might even be a significant improvement. And if you look at the fact that people wear them for a long period, they often make themselves sick from what they've put into the mask over time. Just, it's very hard to defend the masks, and especially if you're dealing with little kids. Say, I'm not getting the exposure, the socialization that they need, they don't get a chance to read the spaces. Don't care. They drop them on the ground, they're wrestling around, and Johnny picks up Joey's mask and puts it on, there's a difference. I mean, the whole thing is just, it's past the point of need. And you said something about Scott, when the COVID is over, it is becoming endemic. It will never be over, at least not in the foreseeable future. So we have to learn how to live with it as an endemic, a pandemic disease. It's time, it's just the time.
It is definitely something that is time. I can understand every, I'm sick of masks. I know that I'm at that point where it's like, okay, let's be done with them. However, masks did keep the virus from spreading in school systems tremendously down. You cannot say that masks did not stop it from spreading like wildfire. It spread like wildfire over the break when all these kids were getting together without masks. That's when it started to spread so badly. So it does keep the numbers down, and especially since we don't have a vaccine for the youngest kids. Seeing a baby on a nebulizer and steroids because they caught COVID because, and, and we have a staff member whose grandson had that happen. So I'm thinking about all of these little guys. I'm thinking about the people who are more vulnerable and at risk. Yes, if you get the vaccine, you're less at risk. For now, if the schools are saying we should be best keeping the kids in masks, I don't think that there's a problem with that. And I think that we need to remember that this library is for little ones as well. And the kids are used to, they hate wearing masks. No one likes wearing a mask. It's, that's obviously, you know, but you can't say that, I don't, I don't think that the research is out there that says that masks are making people sick. It is definitely, the research has shown that it keeps people from getting sick. Even if it's just a small percentage of the time, it's still helping. So until we can say a little bit more about, like, let's, and we understand it's going to be endemic, we know that it's something where everyone's just going to have to learn to live with, just like the flu. But until I think the schools are comfortable saying, okay, we'll not wear masks anymore. For me, because this library is for children as well, I want to make sure that everybody is protected as possible. And if a school is saying, you know what, we're seeing that the numbers are down really significantly. If you don't, we're going to try and go without masks for a while and see how it goes. I don't see that as a bad policy to follow. So that, that's mine.
We have, we have to look. Quick note, is that we have to look into other states to see what happens in the schools. Our state at the level of governor has said all the schools, even private schools, have to wear masks. So it's not the school making the decision.
I have a question. Since we have been following the schools and that's what we've been doing all along. Things, it seems like they'll revisit things in the beginning of March. Let's say the CDC or the governor or the school says, you know, we're going to go without masks. Is this something we need to meet about again? Or are we just in agreement that we're going to follow what they're doing? If it comes up before our next meeting.
Kim, what are you comfortable with?
I would think you would have to come up as a meeting, whether it's like just an executive committee meeting, because it's a policy we've had for so long. It's definitely something that we're, is a policy from the board and it's not something that we can just.
and if if the schools are saying no more, and it's, you know, March 7th, and we don't have our meeting until another two weeks, that's going to be really hard to say to the public, sorry, guys, you still have to wear a mask, even though the schools are and everybody else is done. So.
We frame this, though, as making a motion to say that we're going to follow, follow the lead of the schools. And when they get rid of their masks, we will as well. And that way, if it does come up ahead of the next board meeting, it just, it's already approved to move forward that way.
That I think is logical.
That makes sense to me, too.
Me, too.
Okay.
All right, so let's, someone make a motion with that wording nicely said.
I'll make a motion that we follow the guidance of the school and for now, continue to wear masks in the library. Go back to in-person programming and adjust our policy as the schools adjust theirs.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay.
Ed, did you vote?
Yes, I said hi.
Okay, sorry, I just didn't.
Yeah, so I, I'm sorry about the camera. I'm confused. Given up the ghost of using the camera.
I don't know, Ed. I think it's a bold presentation. I like it.
Oh, I see. You should remember my name.
And Kim, I hope if any of the staff feels, you know, I think we should encourage people if they still want to. If, you know, they can still wear a mask, obviously, if they would prefer. You say there is benefit to, you know, one person masking. So.
Yeah, well, I think that we would phrase it that, you know, if you still want to, you're more than welcome to. You know, and we'll just kind of move it from there.
So we're saying that the staff does does not have to wear masks, but the patients do?
No. Once we go back to no masks, people are allowed to choose to wear a mask if they want.
Oh, yeah, that should be true anywhere. You know, it's surrounding a bank.
All right.
What about the next meeting?
So we'll be in in person then. If we're going back to in-person programming, I think we're good to go in person for the board meeting as well.
Okay.
And I think that means at this point, we'll plan that the annual meeting will be in person as well, like, you know, as long as nothing has changed.
Oh, you may want to consider just doing a hybrid meeting.
Yeah, sorry, I meant, yeah, I meant hybrid. Because I agree with you. I think we should just try to have that hybrid option for that, for everything. It's going to be a challenge.
I was going to say, we may want to buy like those speakerphones, which probably would improve the technology.
We did buy a microphone.
Yeah.
That we're going to try. We should probably go to one of that.
Whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, in our office, we have conference facilities and the phones basically work just fine. I find the the computers, everyone's laptop creates problems.
Yep.
I mean, we bought a microphone that we can hook up to the computer pretty easily, so it should be. So we can definitely give it a try. You know, have my uh my tech savvy kids help me, you know, figure it out first. Or no way can just come in on all of the spare time and figure it out.
Okey dokey, moving along. Treasurer's report, Melanie.
Um, so our biggest thing of note is that we still do not have our $95,000 from the town yet, I guess. Kim said that that was an oversight of PJ and we should be getting our check on March 1st.
I don't know if we'll get it on March 1st, but that's when he's back in the state. So we'll get it then.
Well, that answers my question as to why can't he just do it today? But either way, we had our cushion going into this year that's carrying us through right now. So we're still in good shape with having enough cash flow to pay our bills and things. And otherwise, we're in line with our budget so far for the year. And I think the rest of my report, I assume we're waiting to talk about until later in the meeting. You're on mute, Jen.
All right, the master plan part?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so does anybody have any questions just about general budgeting?
Nope.
Thank you.
So in that case, I am going to put my little guy in bed and then I will be back.
Okay. Okay, so next up, committee reports, fundraising. Not much to say here from last time. So we did close off the annual appeal at the end of January. I had made a couple of checks trickle in at that point, and Kim mentioned she has received a couple more little ones since then, but we're just going to count those as regular donations at this point, rather than keeping adding to the annual appeal. And she'll send those thank you notes. So we have had some brainstorming kind of things and some email exchanges around around fundraising. But again, I think we're going to, as we talk about the master plan plan, it'll help us come to some decisions. In addition, when we talk about the brand committee, looking at some options for some merchandise and things like that, that are some opportunities that way. So any questions or comments on fundraising? Okay, strategic planning, Ed?
It's early in the year. This is the time of year we'll do much, so there's nothing to report. I would like us to have the meeting with the architects. It seems like they've been putting this off for a long time. Whatever COVID they may have there. Find somebody.
So Kim, can you give an update on that? Since Melanie's still away, let's just jump around a minute before we get back to major projects and talk about that. If that's okay with everybody. Build, building in grounds. You're on mute.
We're in mute, Scott.
Uh, nothing much has happened. The trees are down, the wood is gone. Jen is going after Andrew Zima to see if he can give us a quote or see what he's got to say about the work. I'm unaware of any other items coming up. I think we still have some things on our to-do list that haven't been done.
Um, I just had somebody come and take some trees down on my property that looked like they were going to fall down and kill somebody any minute. And it was like the daredevilish looking thing that this guy did. And he did it really quickly and really efficiently, and he was really inexpensive. So if you'd like another bid, he would be interested in that. He's primarily a tree surgeon. He mostly takes trees down, but he also lives on Grand Road. So he said he would be, you know, willing to potentially do some more grounds type stuff as well, even though that's not his sweet spot.
What was his name?
His name is John Costa or Jay Costa. He's a John Jr., so he's called Jay. And I can give you his contact information.
So do we have other trees that we are thinking of pulling down? I thought that we had someone come and suggest more than the two trees that NISIC took down should be looked at. NISIC looked at the trees and said, you got two problems. And at least they weren't concerned with the others, which doesn't necessarily mean mean that those trees shouldn't have some work on them.
I think that the the person that I spoke to agreed with what NISIC did in terms of, like, he had originally said, those two were definitely scary and needed to come down immediately. He said the other two, the other ones are just about to go. Like he said, you know, you maybe have a couple more years out of them. So they weren't as serious of a threat, but or a concern, I should say. But he was, he was like, they're, they were planted the same time. They're all the same species. They need to go. They need to go, basically, yeah.
I think also it looks a little odd, you know, just with the placement of them now. So I think it would probably be a good idea, especially if we can get a reasonable quote to put that into consideration and see if we can get to get those taken care of.
Pursuing and seeing how much, and then we can go from there.
Um, and if he, it sounded like he was willing to give a
Um, yeah, if he wants to give me a
Okay. Um, and it sounded like he was willing to give a quote for like lawn mowing and things as well, which I know that we've got Kirk doing that now, but I don't know if it's good to get, you know, bids from people to see if there's any, especially since he's so local. Maybe he's able to do it. And Andrew Zima, so he he's interested in doing the work. He's interested in supporting the library. He said he might even do some of it at no cost. He does appear to be extremely busy, so he did warn me that he might not be able to get to any work at the very beginning of the spring season because he has other commitments for spring work. He did say, though, that once he does it, he'll come and do the whole job. So, you know, it won't be one of these things to get started. And then, you know, four weeks later, he comes and does some more. He would commit to do the job at one time. He was going to give us a proposal, a kind of three different directions, possibilities, sort of want a more formal, like hedges kind of thing, something else that's more, what do you call it, perennial garden kind of style? Maybe something that's more hybrid. And he understood the concerns with maintenance and blah, blah. So anyway, I did follow up with him this week. He hadn't had a chance to come back out. He was going to try and do it this week, so we'll see if we get that. Kim, was there anything further on the, we're holding on the uh, community room box, right?
Yeah, yeah, I figured it doesn't make sense. We're going to put in a master plan.
Yeah. Okay. Cool. I muted myself. Brandon, marketing.
Yeah, um, so just as a few minor follow-ups to the research that we did. I still need to follow up again with Robin about whether she is actually interested in moving forward with doing a newsletter and finding somebody to do the legwork to get the the stories or whether we should just let that go. As far as the directory is concerned, I put together a Google input form and shared it with the working group, and they seemed to find it useful, made some suggested changes. And so I'm willing to gather the incoming information. If I could send it out to the list of businesses and organizations that Pam Cooper's provided from the Steventown Community Organization. And we could also potentially put the the link up on, say, the Only Steventown on Earth and our Facebook page. It's a little harder to control who who filters it out if we do it that way, but but we could do it and and start to get some some inputs on the businesses in town, how they describe themselves, what kind of businesses they are, how long they've been here. I can share the the forum with anyone that's interested. A number of people here have seen it already. So I just need to kind of close the loop on that with the other people in the group. But it does raise the question of, from that point, once we have the the data and information and we still need to create a website or someone needs to create a website, who should that be? Should we try to coordinate with the town and who should be the point person for that? So I don't know if anybody has any opinions at this point.
I'm I'm a little, I'm both scared. I'm both on whether or not we should be the ones doing all of it, because
Yeah, I think we kind of said the library at this point should really just be helping promote the effort and how, you know, but not really.
Yes. But facilitation sort of turns into you're doing it yourself. I find. So I agree theoretically, I just think that if you take action, nobody else takes action, you wind up
Yeah, I mean, the only, the only issue ends up being, it's not core to what we're doing. We've got plenty of things to do. Is it taking space from or taking attention away from things that are more important for us to do? That's really the only issue.
I don't know if a board member, a town board member would be interested in making that their project for the town, something that they're they're willing to work on. I don't know if that's something we should bring to them and say, yeah.
Yeah, maybe I could bring the input form to PJ, say, you know, we have this tool that might be a great opportunity for somebody on the board to, yeah, I'm perfectly happy to do that. Or if somebody else wants to be the spokesperson, I'll find that too.
I wonder if it could be a school project, someone in the high school put together something, whether they'd be interested in picking it up.
It's possible, but then you have to worry about the continuity of it and whether or not, you know, because they graduate, or if it's just for one class, do they really want to keep doing it for two or three years? That's my like, unless it's one teacher, like, this is my class and I'm going to do this.
Yeah, that's a fair point, but even if they set it up and someone else can pick up the continuity, I just suggestion, I don't know that works.
Is it something Start with the the town board just to see, because if if they actually jump at the chance, I doubt they will, but if they do, that would be and we'll go from there.
I wonder if it's something the newspaper, like Eastwood Press, might want to do for their own purposes.
Well, we want it to be a web-based tool, because, you know, there there will be many changes over time, and that's the the easiest way to make changes and you know, not not have paper. We can have like a paper copy option that somebody can download from from the web, but we want it to be a web-based thing.
I think they did a something like that. I don't know if they ever kept it up, but I think they had some sort of directory at some point. Their website, I haven't been on there in quite a while, but because I get the paper now, but their website isn't necessarily terrific. But I think at one point, I remember seeing a link that they had of like business things or directory thing, but I don't know if they've kept it up.
I'll take a look.
It's something that some local newspapers do. It gets advertisers in, run promotions and gee, you buy half a page, they'll give you an article. There are ways they can play the game. Give them economic benefits.
It's not a bad point just to check in with them.
Uh, so moving on, some of these things are just sort of things that we're working on on an ongoing basis that I don't really need to crawl out, although we need continue doing them. Um, I think the the next thing to focus on here is the pricing comparisons, which I put an Excel spreadsheet in the folder if people want to look at it. But I think what we concluded in our brand and marketing committee meeting was that we'd like to try out the Bex Printing pop-up website option, which they would do, they they create a branded website for us at no cost. They keep the the thing open for two to four weeks, so we would schedule it at a time where we think we can drive people to the web to to purchase things. They do have a requirement of a minimum of 36 clothing things. So so like sweatshirts, t-shirts, because of the printing costs, if we don't sell at least that many, it's not worth it to them. And 36 mugs, which seem like kind of a lot.
We sold a lot of mugs last time.
Oh, really?
I think we did.
Did you take a look at the pictures of the?
Yeah, they look great.
You thought they looked
I like them, yeah.
Okay. So so we're kind of interested in giving that a shot. And and then they basically do all the printing at the end of, if it's a four-week period, they wait for everybody to order. At the end of the four-week period, they they do the printing, they deliver it to the library, all the merchandise, so people can pick it up at the library. And then the the funds are exchanged, basically. So if we ordered 30
So if we ordered three thirty, ten-dollar mugs, sold them for twenty dollars, just uh, you know, we'd make three hundred dollars on on the mugs alone, yeah.
I think a good option, um, I really love it for the clothing aspect, so you don't have to guess what sizes and things like that. People have control of that. Um, so I think that's really great to give that a whirl. And uh, for some of the other thing, the the mugs, if I think there's like, I didn't, okay, you also mentioned the tote bags, things like that. You've had, you know, knowing things that we've had better luck with, we might be less risky to have to purchase and have our own stock of and sell on our own, but I think this is a great thing to try out and see if it works for us. You definitely see a lot of other organizations doing things like this and nice to have something kind of low risk.
Besides the mugs, do we guarantee them any other minimum? You said we had to get thirty-six mugs.
Oh, yeah, and and there, it has to be at least thirty-six sweatshirts, t-shirts, whatever it is that we are are, and bags, I think, was was also part of that thirty-six because it's the same printing, like the the printing on a hard thing like a cup is different than the printing on.
So could we do like six bags and six t-shirts and, you know?
Yes, as long as it all adds up to thirty-six.
Oh, okay, so it doesn't have to be thirty-six bags and thirty-six t-shirts.
No, it does have to be thirty-six mugs, but it doesn't have to be thirty-six.
Oh, that's perfect then. I don't think that that's a good way to go.
Okay, okay.
With the clothing, do you have problems with sizing or how do they work that?
Well, I think you just, the the person would order, you know, small, medium, large, women's, men's, and it's up to them to figure out what they think their size is based on.
Oh, so you don't have to buy a certain number of sizes?
No, we don't buy anything. People order it, so but but they are saying they have to have enough orders, like thirty-six orders in total to make it worth their while. So we would have to guarantee that and then if people didn't order it, we'd be up a creek, I guess. So that's why we're trying to decide if.
It sounds like a better model than just buying clothing and.
Right.
Yeah.
Because then if we didn't meet the minimum, we could always just say, okay, we'll buy, you know, we'll we'll buy the ten bags and, you know, we'll sell them later, you know?
We'll all be wearing t-shirts.
Yeah.
Happy birthday, everybody.
This is my fourth t-shirt really now.
Yeah, we're not talking in huge scale, so it wouldn't be any, any enormous.
I'm sure my dogs.
Okay, so so we'll uh think about what the timing for that would be. Um, and I thought it would make sense to try to coordinate it with the seventy-fifth anniversary in some way. Yep.
It's so, trying to figure out when the Senate, the anniversary is, because we have our day when we have the charter. We have the day when we actually, like, they signed the paperwork to say, yes, we're going to be a library with it. So we can say, this is our seventy-fifth anniversary.
You just make it a year-long celebration, whatever we needed extra boost to our activities.
Um, another thing, I decided that I, the Calvicott um lecture that uh Kim was interested in and Scott had that great idea about looking at how the books change over time. I decided I wanted to do it myself and I started putting it together, so I'm on like slide twenty-five. So I'm not, I I figure like spring, summer kind of timeframe, I could have it together. And but I had a question, Kim. I thought it would be really cool with a couple of the books if we could have uh, audio tape link in the in the presentation of a kid who really loves one of the the books, talk about what what they liked about it, you know, something really brief, but.
I wonder if we could work with some of the schools to get something about that. We have to, I'd have to look into it, but we maybe we can try and see if we can get that.
All right, that'd be cool. Um, and let's see what else. Uh. I also had this idea. Um, I think you're all familiar with StoryCorps. And the guy who does StoryCorps also started this thing called One Small Step. And the idea around that is that he he um gets people who are politically on o- opposite sides of the fence and uh gets the two people together, doesn't discuss the politics of it at all. But each person writes up sort of a biography of their their life and what's important to them and um, and they hand each other their story, they read it out loud, it's taped. And it turns out that these people have all these commonalities and things that they um really relate to each other on without realizing that they're on opposite uh sides of the political spectrum. So my idea wasn't wasn't a political one, but I thought it would be real kind of cool to do this with new people coming to town and more established people in town um to have that kind of sharing and then the more established person would be sort of a sponsor for the first year of the person being in town. So as part of our welcome program, just another way of approaching it and possibly we could um audiotape them and use them. So. Thoughts?
I think we need to work on it, so I would love to, if we want to try and do something together.
Yeah, that sounds great.
I think it's a, it's a cool idea. Um, I don't know how logistics will work with finding people, but I think it's it's nice. It's nice to tie it in with the idea of new new people and the older people of of town.
Yeah, maybe we could do it more broadly than than new new people, but that would be one arm of it, kind of. Yeah. Um, then that's that's sort of it for me.
And website update, do you want to cover that?
We're making a lot of progress on it. Um, Kim and I will continue to work uh throughout next week and hopefully uh tackle, I would say ninety percent of it, get it done. Uh, we were in good shape right now, so hopefully um, within the next couple of weeks, um, we'll we'll have something very solid.
Great, that's that's going to be exciting to have that.
Okay.
Alrighty. Anything else on Brandon Marketing?
I forgot to mention about the socks for soldiers. I think probably everybody knows about that here, but if you want to bring in, we're a distribution point. Maybe you talked about that before I was, nope, I didn't.
And I did ask Diana, it sounds like what, like, what kind is something that people need? And she said basically anything, because it can be either stuff that they're wearing like on duty or it can be, you know, the socks they're wearing when they're off duty, so.
I think it's weirdest thing I've ever heard of, like the military doesn't buy socks for soldiers, like what? They don't spend enough money off in taxes for the military that they don't have socks?
They do. Very comfortable and they they don't last long. Crazy.
Exactly.
Okay. Uh, alrighty, um, recruitment.
Yes, um, Kim and I have been talking about a few different options. Um, we need ideas and board members. Um, I think Ed is done in April, is that correct? And we are still looking um for a youth committee replacement. Um, Kim has talked to at least one person um, who was was not, was too busy. Um, so any suggestions are welcome if anybody.
I actually, I'm Rebecca. I I am having breakfast at Blueberry Hill with somebody who joined the book group recently. Patty was on Garfield Road and um I'm going to kind of suss her out and see, she's really into books, like she reads all the time. Um, I don't, I think she's fairly busy. I think she works, but I'll I'll see if she might be interested, so. Know what, you know, if that sounds promising.
Sure, yeah.
Did anything come of the Maria idea?
Um, I talked to her and she said, thank you so much, however, she's not.
Have a good start to the answer.
However, I did actually get her to say she she's wants to do more stuff with us again. So she said she will do, she'd be happy to do some crafts or art type programs for us, like, you know, but if it's just a a once a month thing where she comes in and just does something quick and then, you know, but she's happy to do that. But she said she's got, she babysits her grandchildren and she's got a lot going on. She's still taking classes and so not the best time for her to do that.
Okay.
I tried.
So we're, we're, um, everybody so far in the in the last group that we proposed has been a no, right? We don't, we don't have anyone we haven't approached yet that we had come up with.
We had some, um, Colleen Foodie, who we had thought of revisiting. I don't know. My battery is dying. I, I, at the time that we approached her originally, it was at the beginning of the pandemic and I think her husband was ill. I think her situation may have changed a little. That was one thought.
Okay, so she has not been approached yet, so that's a possibility. Okay. Does anybody know her better than anybody else?
I knew her pretty well. I'm in the library eleven years, so. I can try and reach out to her again.
Okay, that'd be awesome. Thank you. Anybody have any other suggestions at this point or anybody? Any other ideas? Uh, so we we put out the word in the newsletter. But we didn't do anything further at that point to see if we got any responses, so I assume we didn't get any responses from that. So we can still do the Facebook post, including the group post, um, putting it out to the Only Steventown on Earth group, um, and we could put something in the Eastwood Press now. Um, so I think we can, we'll move forward with that.
Jen, do you want to do the submission for the Eastwood Press?
Sure, I can do that. Do you want me to do the Facebook thing too, the group one?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Are there parents' organizations in the schools that might be a possibility that they have people who might be interested in doing something like this? Um, no, just asking.
I mean, honestly, most, like, the PTO is struggling as much as we are to find numbers.
And the PTO is Elaine and she's.
Okay. We can just get out the nets then.
Yeah.
Crap someone.
I have another thought of somebody else who I can go after, um, if Patty doesn't work work out. I.
Well, right now we need, we're one member short of our nine, so I should, we actually need two.
Right, I could, I have to go through uh Freeling and Susan, because I met these people, but they were very booky and then talked about books with us the whole time and I I don't know if they come to the library. I don't know their names. That's the tricky part, but I know the house that they live.
Sorry, I'm beginning to sound like a stalker.
She looks in the windows, oh, they're reading, let me see.
They might be a trustee.
Well, it just occurred to me that they, I mean, they seem like they, they were very smart and interested in in books, so. I wasn't interested enough to find out their names. I just don't remember.
Um, as for the youth commission, Vicky has expressed interest in helping out with it. She does not want to do the camps though, so she said she'd be happy to run the Halloween party and the Easter party, but um, the camp is something she's not comfortable with, but I told her if she's really interested in doing it, then we can sit and talk and maybe have Rebecca, but I wasn't sure also, because I know that it used to be, I know Tom was formerly very um adamant that if we have employees, they should not be allowed to volunteer for um doing work, because that just would be wrong. So I don't know how everyone else feels about that now. So, you know, that would be the only other issue is that she would be considered a volunteer, but she's also an employee of the library. So how does that, how do we work all that?
Is there a difference? I mean, uh, and the committees, anyone is welcome to join, any member of the library is welcome to join the committee. And I think at that point, you're, it's, we're not asking her to volunteer at an event or something like that. It's a a regular library, uh, doing her regular library job on a volunteer basis. She would be volunteering to be on the committee and then doing committee work. Um.
I think where Tom saw the gray was that if, for example, Kim has helped out with um, like the Easter party or because her kids were interested in it, not because she was an employee of the library, but then if we also had other employees there who are getting paid to be there, it it just got wishy-wash, you know? I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I just think that's what he was seeing as crossing the line or, you know, to think.
His other concern was that people, we might be getting too much out of the, of what we're paying. Work eight hours a week and got paid, we expect them to come on Saturday and spend two more hours selling cookies or something, you know, just sort of cut their salaries. So you just have to be careful if we cross that line.
There's an actual answer, if we can ask Upper Hudson or what we can ask, but I don't know, to me, it's, I don't see the issue and it it seems like it also could be, if Vicky is truly interested in doing the parties, it could be a nice way to help divide up the responsibilities, maybe, so people don't feel like it's all on them, if you know, that some, you know, she could sort of, sort of be a shared thing, somebody else who would be willing to help with summer camp oversight and, you know, maybe you have somebody who has more of time in the summer versus time when we're doing the other parties, I don't know, but.
A teacher has a funny time in the summer. It melts in the low rest of the year.
Yeah, I mean, I think if Vicky wants to help with the committee, that's, that's great. We still need a board member to oversee the committee, is the.
Right, right.
And and I've approached teachers, most of the teachers right now are completely burnt out. They don't want to take on an extra.
So are we okay with having Vicky join the committee?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, the committee is open to anyone. Um, as I said, the only time I limited who was invited to committee meetings was when we talked about camp salaries and stuff like that, but I think, I think Vicky has headed the youth committee before.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think someone like Vicky, I would feel comfortable um having her be part of that, if she wanted to be. It doesn't sound like she wants to be. I was more worried about, you know, parents getting involved and talking about who, which teens were hiring and which were not and how much someone was getting paid. But yeah, Vicky is welcome to join the committee.
Okay, great. So let's at least move forward with that, gives us a little forward progress and maybe she'll have somebody she can suggest to if she starts getting involved that, you know, she would like to work with, that might be a good.
I'll, I'll out to her because we should start planning the Easter party and I actually will not be here for Easter, so.
I'll be here tomorrow and she will too, so I'll, I'll keep with her about it.
So is that a good transition to youth committee?
Oh, sure. I, I'm not sure I have anything else for you.
What's the date for um the party?
Um, we have to set that. It's just at the library, so it's not like we have to reserve or anything.
Have we reserved the hall for Halloween?
Yeah.
Um, I don't think we have. So I'll contact them. Do we want to do it on the thirtieth? Because the thirty-first is a Monday this year. Usually we do the party on a Sunday or Saturday. I don't remember. What did we do, Saturday or Sunday?
I think this year we did it on a, it was supposed to be on a Saturday and the rain date was a Sunday.
Right, so I'll just see if we can get it for that weekend and see where. I have to get it actually for the April one, Tuesday.
Um, and I guess as far as planning the Easter party. we should plan to have it out mostly outside.
Makes sense. So you'll be setting up a meeting to start the planning discussion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But I think we can have activities outside rather than just grab and go like last year. Everybody agree with that or?
Oh, absolutely. Okay.
We'll be warm on it.
I don't know.
I was muted. Can we have the tent up by then? Because then we're going to fall back in the rain.
Ground is too wet still to put the tent up. Unless, yeah.
Ground may be too wet forever, the amount of rain we've had.
Yeah. And yeah, I guess it would depend if, if we don't get any more snow, maybe it would dry out. But usually with snow melt, well, it's still mushy.
Good luck with that, Rebecca.
Hey, I love now.
March is a fairly large snow month.
I really, so.
Okay, anything else on youth?
No, I think that's it.
All right. John's not here, so skip over the administrative report. And we'll circle back to major projects with, now Melanie's here as well. So Kim, do you want to just start with the quick update from, from Paul? And then we'll talk about the money too.
There really isn't an update. It's just that he has, he told me that he's been super busy with other, finishing up other projects. And that's why we haven't heard from him recently. But he gave me a couple of dates in March, so we're going to kind of go back and forth with the figuring out what date. But he does want to get started as soon as possible, as soon as he's able to without, just, well, see, no, really quick. So I'm looking tentatively for March 9th and see if that works with him. And he's been trying to clear some of the lingering projects so that he can then focus on, on us. So when we do have this meeting, it's going to be him and someone named, from his office. And he's going to try and see if he can get some other engineers to come with him as well. But I don't know where that, where things lay with that. So that's pretty much it as far as I know.
Their initial focus would be on the building assessment?
Yeah, they're going to take measurements of key building dimensions. Look at the systems, both mechanical and electrical. And then just talk about some priorities. And then he's going to try and have the engineers come too.
The engineers, the ones who are the experts on systems and layout and things like that?
I'm not sure. I think that he was, I know that his partner is also an engineer. So he was going to try and get him to come with him as well.
Yeah, I thought there was also a woman who was coming because she knew more about furnishings, that sort of stuff.
Right, I think that that's the other person that's planning on coming.
Um, and Kim, we've sent now everything that we owed him except for our estimate of matching dollars, correct? Like the other utility bills and the-
And I already sent the utility bills.
Yep. All the drawings we have, everything else. We've, in other words, we're, we're square with him at this point. We're just-
As far, yeah, as far as I know, we should be. I sent him the drawings that I have. Um, he hasn't sent me an invoice for anything other than that $500 initial fee that we paid him. So, but once he did send us, you know, he has to send us an invoice for all, you know, for the start, to get everything started, which he hasn't done yet. But yeah, in terms of like all the paperwork they asked, I sent that a while ago.
Thank you.
And I could not find any other maps or drawings of the building. I've been looking, but can't seem to find it.
So the other thing he asked for us was to give him an estimate of what we thought we would be comfortable matching for grant funds. So Melanie can, can share her thoughts on that.
Um, so as we kind of talk about a little bit, every month we've been carrying around a cushion of extra funds that has been growing a little bit over the years as we get more annual appeal money in than we've been budgeting for. So we have about $65,000 in cash that was left over at the end of 2021. We also have our funds that are in our special project account, which right now is a little over 30, just over $35,000. We're spending $17,500 on the master plan. So after we take that out of the special projects, we have seven, about $17,500 left over. So with our special projects money, after we pay for the master plan and our cushion, we have close to $80,000 that we can do something with. I don't think we want to spend all of that in case of things like we didn't get $95,000 for two months this year and needed money to pay bills. But out of that $80,000, I feel like if we use $50,000 to put towards a matching grant fund so that we can kind of realize our dreams, um, I feel safe with that.
Yeah, I mean, also, our projects won't really need to be funded for probably another 18 to 24 months cycle. So like a project goes in, let's say September, the funds get awarded in, oh gosh, as I recall, I think they're talking about November or December, I think, maybe January. They really don't get funded until June or July and whether you're ready to start or not. So we've got some time. So it's not, we don't have to worry about cash on hand today. It's really cash on hand or the amount that we'll have to devote to a project which goes out over time, probably starting in about 16 to 18 months. Just to keep in mind, I know it's just sort of like it's, I mean, I think you're sort of right. You definitely want an operating cushion. Who knows what happens? Who knows what comes up? We've got somebody in special accounts. And probably in the first instance, we're going to want to do something small anyway. Sort of, I think, stick our toes into this and find something that we think is useful for us and attractive and start introducing the community to thinking about expansion and paying for expansion and finding a nice project that you can start fundraising around. But small.
And at this point, I don't think we have, we're, I think we're just trying to give Paul a ballpark, an idea of, of it. So we're not committing. It's nothing that we need to like say, you know, that we're absolutely committing to, just to kind of give him an idea. So I think it seems, from what Melanie presented, that seems like a reasonable number to me.
As a working number, it's okay. Our inclination would be not to give them too much guidance on how much to spend, but at least on this first pass, it's more idea of what, what they think would be good ideas for us and what we could most benefit from.
Yeah, I, I agree with, I agree with Ed. I think the issue is not, I mean, yeah, you couldn't say currently, we're, you know, we have around a range of this nut. But what we're more interested, really more interested in is, here's the plan. Here are what are needs. What are the array of projects? You know, basically, I think you eliminate some that are just, you know, more than we think that we can handle and focus on what we probably think is doable. I think the first question is, is assess the need in one of the options rather than having them focus on specifically, you know, how much we, in the short term, think we can collect and then having them work to that number.
The idea is the overview first and then we figure out what we want to do. Which I'm sure they've worked with many a time.
Yeah, I, I, I think Jen's right. He's, he's just sort of looking for just general numbers at this point in terms of what do we think is financially doable for us?
If his whole purpose is figure out what we want, spend $50,000 or a million, then we should certainly tell them about $5,000.
Oh, I thought you were going to go with a million.
Well, depends on your contributions.
My contribution is vision.
How much maple syrup are we going to get this year, Scott?
Not, not enough to build the whiner wing.
Okay, so it sounds like we're comfortable. I mean, I think we're all in agreement in terms of, of the approach on that. So that sounds good. Um, all right. Uh, let's see, what are we up to? Um, old business. I don't know of any old business. Thank you, Ed, for following up on those tax credit stuff. It's good to get a final answer on that now. No, it's a shame we're not eligible, but it's good to know, so.
I was disappointed.
Yeah. Any other old business? Okay. Um.
Oh, we have another member of the public.
I know, Judy. Anything to say?
Two meetings in a row, kids board grouping.
You should just make them a member.
The youth committee, it's for young.
Okay, so on new business, we touched on it a little bit, but I just wanted to just reiterate that Kim did realize and discover that it is our 75th anniversary this year. I didn't, I didn't believe her. I went and checked my T-shirt because I was like, it can't be that five years have passed already. But it has, so. So thinking about activities we can do to tie into that, I think we want to-
By washing the T-shirt?
Yeah, I've heard people do historical research and use all sorts of different kinds of sources, but I've never heard anyone checking historical facts based upon a T-shirt.
That's why I'm not a librarian. I went to my file drawer of all my T-shirts and I went through them and I- I do have a whole drawer of Steven Towne T-shirts.
May, maybe there's an exhibit in there.
That's not a bad idea.
So I think as we move forward, obviously we want to tie it into the annual meeting planning, a little bit of a theme on that. And then as we move forward with some, some of our other plans, that's a good, good kind of talking point to have for things. So, um, the other thing I want to just ask Kim, um, live at the library, are we starting planning on that? And that seemed like something that could really be good to-
Yeah, as soon as the annual report is done, I'm going to be contacting all of the performers again and putting the word out there again and getting more people. Because I'd like to start it in June this year and keep going all the way through the summer if we can. Because it was, and I was also thinking that it would be great if we could do some performers who are more geared towards children as well. Maybe doing like a Saturday afternoon performance from some children's performers or maybe even, I, I don't know if teenagers do this anymore. But I know when I was a teenager, we had, I had friends who were in bands all over the place. Like maybe we could see if we could get some teens to come in and do some bands. You know, just try and get it a little bit more accessible to lots of other types of people. But yes, it's definitely going to happen.
Not, not just the blue hair set.
No, I think we want to get a younger crowd in there too. But I do know that Beavis wants to do it again as well. So we're going to work on it as a combined effort again.
Okay, so we'll be doing an effort again. Okay, great. Okay, that's good. And-
The other question I had about, because this is in my annual report that I have to do, I need to know if board members have done any training as of, so for the 2021 year, how many, if, if everyone has done some kind of a training? And I can't remember what kinds of trainings we've had with Upper Hudson and all that. So I just need to know a yes or a no, basically, from everybody, whether or not. So actually, if anyone hasn't done anything, maybe just tell me that. That way I can, you know, just say yes to everybody. And I think everyone's done, haven't we done core training or?
Everybody, I have not.
Okay. Anyone else?
I don't know. Like, 2021 was a lost year for me. I just have like no sense of what I did.
I, I, same thing for me. I, you know, it's like, I think I had my hip replaced in 2021, but that doesn't feel right. You know, like, just does not, that year didn't exist anymore.
You know the multicultural training that you had talked about that was coming up? Did you ever send anything out about that?
No, it hasn't, it's something that we bring them in to do.
I'm interested.
Okay, I'll, yeah, I have to find out more information about that.
Noi, have you done the core training yet?
I have not yet.
Okay. So, um, I think the next is-
Well, this is only from 2021.
Oh, right, he wasn't here then, yeah.
The next one coming up, just as an FYI, where is it here? I can't find it. And they really are-
It's almost March or April.
May, May 3rd is the next one.
Okay.
And, you know, they really are pretty good. Sarah and I did it again.
Really interesting.
They, they do a good job. They make it make sense and it is important stuff to, to know. So I, I do, I do recommend it, not just because you have to, but it is actually pretty good. So we're probably a little bit not looking great on the training aspect for 2021. Do we get like points off or something? Or is this just a record case?
It's new, so I have no idea whether or not, how they're going to handle it. I'm not sure. So-
Because it hasn't been required up to this point. It's going to be required next year, right? The two hours.
A great, a great period, I think. So the, so has anybody done any kind of, like, is there somebody I could put yes for?
Yes.
Yes. And Jen, was that this year though, or is that last year?
I did last year and this year. I did it twice and I still can't even look right to you. I found it interesting. I have my checklist. Anyone else? No? Okay. Okay. Thanks.
All right, any other new business? Correspondence, I, I'm sorry, I really fell down on the administrative end of things this month. I'm not sure why. I forwarded all the things I was going to save to the Drive file and didn't do it. So there's, get a lot of Nyla stuff. There's a couple of Upper Hudson things. I'll post them up there. I apologize. I don't think there was anything that needed discussion or anything, but. Anything else? Going once, going twice? Motion to adjourn?
Oh, boo.
Thank you, Ed. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everybody. I assume we all agree.
We need to vote.
Yeah, I assume we all are in agreement. Hostage here tonight, are you? All right, thanks everyone very much. Have a good night.
Have a good one.